Okay, we're about ready to start. If we can get our esteemed journalists to have a seat, we'll start.
Call a meeting to order, Ms. Marshall.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Fouch?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher.
President.
Quorum is President, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson is going to lead us in prayer and pledge. Please stand.
Lord, I thank you for this day, and I thank you for another opportunity to stand before the citizens of North Little Rock to take care of business on their behalf. I especially thank you for allowing me to return after being gone for close to six weeks. I thank you and I praise you for that. Lord, I ask that you be in our midst today and that you take care of each of us and our families and our military folks that are overseas that are fighting for our cause. Help us as we go throughout this meeting, touch our hearts and our minds while we will make right decisions. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Communications, anybody want to pull a communication?
Yes, I'd like for number seven to be pulled.
Pull seven, okay.
Six, number six.
And six. All right, how about a motion to accept one through five?
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Number six.
Number six, would you like it by title or by entirety?
Entirety.
Okay. This is from Mary Beth Bowman, dated September 4, 2015, to the Honorable Joe A. Smith, Mayor of North Little Rock and the Honorable Members of the North Rock City Council. Dear Mr. Smith and City Council members, this letter is to give you an update on the success of auctioning the city's surplus property on Gov. Deals. We've started selling our surplus property on Gov. Deals in August 2014. As of August 2015, we have sold $116,000 worth of property. Our buyers have come from the states of New York, New Jersey, Nebraska, North Carolina, Texas, Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee, Maine, Louisiana, Kansas, and numerous cities in Arkansas, as well as the country of Bailey's and the territory of Puerto Rico. We are solely decreasing our surplus equipment and cleaning up our city compound, as well as getting rid of items from other departments that are no longer in use. We have been sold boats, computers, vehicles, to old air conditioners, and everything in between. Signed, Mary Beth Bowman, Director of Commerce.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
That was a good decision to make, to switch over to that Gov. Deals, and we have to thank Debbie for that because she was the one that encouraged us a number of years ago to get to this online auction, and since we've done it, it's paid its benefits. So, thanks Debbie for leading that, Ms. Ross, I'm sorry. Okay, number seven.
Number seven is from Dennis Fiss, President of the Rose City Neighborhood Association, dated September 11, 2015. Mayor Smith and City Council Members, dear Mayor and City Council Members, on behalf of the Rose City Neighborhood Association, I am writing this letter to express our full opposition of ordinance 01570 regarding the event center. We do not have any issues with the business owner. We do, however, feel that the type of business is not a good fit for our neighborhood. The location for this business backs up to a good number of residential homes. It is across the street from a longstanding church. Event centers are normally open to the use of alcohol and people from outside the community who do not have an interest in the neighborhood. It is located on the major thoroughfare through our neighborhood, and there are some current concerns regarding traffic and possibly intoxicated people leaving the site. We currently have 16 churches, a recreation center, and two funeral homes directly in Rose City, not to mention the Glenview Recreation Center across Broadway. If anyone needs a facility holding an event, it's already in our neighborhood and well established. According to the business Facebook page, the event center appears to have already opened as of July 11, 2015. We have concerns regarding business that opens knowingly without the proper zoning and business license. Our neighborhood has worked hard, and we are starting to see the neighborhood turn around. Humms Hardware chose not only to stay in the neighborhood, but expand their business by building a new and much larger building. We have the children's therapy business relocating from JFK to the former Lynch Drive Elementary School, and our Neighborhood Association has applied for funding and hopes to receive enough money to add inclusive equipment to our neighborhood park. At this time, the residents of our neighborhood ask that you do not support this legislation.
Okay, let's move then, accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Thank you very much. We have no hearings, we have no presentations.
So, let's go into public comment on legislation, and the only one signed up is Teresa Bridgeforth on 01570. Teresa, the podium is yours in three minutes, please.
Go ahead.
Is that on?
Is that microphone?
I don't think it's on.
Yes, I'm Teresa Bridgeforth, and I apply for the ordinance 01570, trying to get, it's not a event center, it's a venue that's located 4514 Lynch Drive. Alcohol will not be served, only 75 people is allowed in the building at a time, so it'll be on a small scale, which is big for receptions and like baby showers, and that's it. We have agreed to provide security at all events and keep the area clean in need.
Okay, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Bridgeforth, we were sent a link to your center, and it appears that you have been operating.
No, ma'am, I have not been operating. What I did was, I did a dedication to a deceased child to one of the rooms inside of the building. And that calls for family members and stuff to come to the dedication.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
I'll wait till we get to the legislation.
Excuse me?
I'll wait till we get to the piece of legislation.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments, Teresa?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I wouldn't have a problem if y'all don't to go ahead and deal with that legislation now because it's the last on the agenda, so we might as well go ahead and touch it now. Is that all right? No objections?
It's fine.
With that, Ms. Marshall, why don't you call 01570, and we'll deal with that legislation right now.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow an event center in a C-3 zone for certain real property located at 4514 Lynch Drive in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, declaring emergency first reading.
Okay, let's.
An amendment, don't we have an amendment?
Let's explain what happened there, Counselor, on the typo or whatever you want to call it.
Well, we were caught by the victim of cut and paste, and that's about the best explanation I can give you. We erroneously had Alderman Baxter listed as a sponsor on that. Normally, when we have ordinances for consideration only, those are filed under your name. It's important that when matters pass through the planning commission, whether they're approved of the planning commission or denied, when they, you know, the true approving body is the City Council, and we believe that applicants have a right to be heard before this body, and that's why it was being filed, but we just improperly filed it under Alderman Baxter's name. I apologize for the error.
All right, with that objection, we'll just call that a typo and take Alderman Baxter's name off there and put my name on there, and we won't need to vote on that, I don't think. All right, everybody all of that? Okay, so how about suspend rules? Anybody want to suspend rules?
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to suspend the reading, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Do I have a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any comments, any questions, on the motion?
On the motion to adopt.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fouch.
I'm going back to this, if the honor or the honor would like to come up, I'm going back to this, the business was open, and she said it was only doing that for a dedication. I find it quite presumptuous to dedicate a room and a location that you officially have not been entitled to run that business in, so I'm, it concerns me that there may have been other activities other than that in that location, that's just my view.
All right, on the question. On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
No.
White?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Fouch?
No.
Height?
No.
And Witcher?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Bridgeforth. Okay, let's go to unfinished business.
01568, Mayor Hayes.
How about 01561, Alderman Taylor?
Sorry, let me get it, 01561, Alderman Taylor.
And he's not here, he did not tell me to call that, so that'll be held. 65, I'll hold that too. Okay, consent agenda, anybody want to pull from the consent agenda? Ms. Fouch?
R15129.
129 being pulled, okay, any others? All right, all those, how about a motion to adopt all those except R15129?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Please read R15129, Ms. Marshall.
A resolution consenting to a ground lease for U.S. Postal Services employee parking at 304 West Pershing Boulevard.
I can explain that with a motion? How about a motion?
Move for.
Okay, the, this is the parking lot that we spent $16,000 on to fix it because the postal employees lost their parking at the high school. Okay, we fixed it, they paid us the $16,000, and that was for two years. So, the post office called me and wanted to do a long-term lease on that property for the same thing that they were paying the school, which was 2,500. I counted it 4,000, they agreed. That property is leased to the Argentus Men's Club, and they have agreed to receive that money and then turn it around and give it right back to the city. So, the Argentus Club will not get any of that money, it will all come to the city.
Okay, that was my question because in section two, it says to be paid directly to city clerk, though your exhibit says through the Argentus Club, and I was just kind of curious on the machinations there.
Yeah, it, well, the proceeds will be remitted to the Argentus City Club, who will remit the proceeds to the city clerk, I guess is how the money would flow, but all proceeds end up in the general fund of the city.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
I had the same question, and that's why I called, and I don't know, does that need to be clarified more then, in there? Because, I mean, it did say in there that the checks would be payable to the Argentus City Club, but, so I don't know if it needs more clarification.
But, we're the owners of the property, we have to consent to any sublease, that's a, you know, that's a consideration right now to the consent of the sublease. It's in the resolution, so no sublease is authorized, they're not allowed to lease that property unless the money's coming to us. Does that answer it?
I guess it's just that the check is made out to them, though, I guess is where I'm, and I think Alderman Fouch was having the same question.
Whatever you want to do there, I've already met with the executive.
I mean, I'm okay with it, I'm perfectly okay with it, just the wording in the.
As long as it's understood.
Right.
I met with the executive committee, and they voted to do that, so, where everybody's street legal. All I gotta do is get the President of the Club to sign it, and the P.O., post office will sign it, and we'll be done. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
So, it will be in the minutes, then, if we can add that into the minutes, that that will, that it was, that was to go to the city? Okay, yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go on to new business.
15134, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sell vacant land located at the 800 block of Maple Street in the city of North Rock to Argentus Flats LLC.
So move.
All right, let me explain that, if you got, if you, I haven't read that particular, how we ended up wording it, but basically, that is the appraisal on that property. My plan is to take the proceeds from that and finish out the alley between Seventh and Eighth, or Sixth and Seventh.
Eighth and Ninth.
Sixth and Seventh, which we're guessing about $100,000, and then I want to earmark the rest of that for, I think we called it downtown development, plaza development, or...
So, the verbiage in section three says that the proceeds of the sale described in section one shall be used exclusively for downtown redevelopment, including without limitation, alleyway improvements, and development of a downtown plaza.
Okay.
So, by that, by the inclusion of that resolution, the money would be restricted to those purposes.
Money's earmarked, right. Okay, issues, questions, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions?
I guess my question is, so, when we have some property to sell, that it can be earmarked for, that we will earmark it for that area, then?
I wouldn't have a problem with that, if this was in Park Hill, or Levy, or Rose City, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Okay, so we've got some.
Okay, on the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
15135, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute acknowledgement and consent to the terms of an easement and construction agreement between the Arkansas Travelers Baseball Club Incorporated and Arkansas State Highway Commission for temporary construction easements and the replacement of the Broadway Bridge.
Move for adoption.
Second.
This is just to, they're losing parking spots, we're adding a new parking lot to take up for the lost parking spots, that's what that money's going to be spent for. Questions?
Got a question, just, why is this between the Travelers and State Highway Department?
Why is it between them?
Don't we own the, who owns the property?
The public building authority owns the property, they are the leasing, lessor, and so the contract has to be with them, it's their parking spots that they're losing, so they're taking this money and building a new parking lot there at the corner of Willow and Broadway.
I can get into more detail with it if you want to, I mean, I went back through the management and lease agreement that we have with the Travelers, compared the contract that they're going into with the State Highway Transportation Department, because I had the exact same question as to how this plays out. This is a temporary taking, it's spoken of in the agreement, since they're the lessor, they're really the party who's impacted by it. You know, so, one of the concerns that we have is always, you know, where's the money going, you know, what's, what's being done with the funds, what's being done with the facility, since, as the mayor said, the public building authority owns it, but they own it in trust for the city, you know, that's how they hold the interest of that facility. So, the money's to be used for parking, as I'm aware of, I think onsite, is that...
Right, it's onsite. Yes, ma'am.
This is just temporary, right?
Well, the parking lot will be there when it's all over, so we'll end up with additional parking spots, but we're going to end up losing, once they widen the bridge, we're going to lose some more spots, and we, along with the Travelers, have negotiated with the Highway Department for, I can't even get close to telling you how much money it is, but that will be held until the construction is finished, and then we'll know exactly what we need to do to make them whole on their parking, so that will be two or three years from now. Okay?
So, the full, so the $130,000 will be used to replace, I think that you explained to me possibly another location in that area?
Yeah, it's at the corner of Willow and Broadway, you know where Municipal League is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's right across the street. West. Okay, do we have a motion, Ms. Marshall?
Yes.
I think we do.
All right, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
15136, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Task Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
We call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on R15136 regarding liens? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
01568, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Little Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring emergency first reading.
suspend all readings. Place it on its first reading.
All right, have a second. This is not a new tax.
What was your motion?
suspend rules and place it on.
Second.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Oh, second thing.
I said first.
This is not a new tax, this is something we have to do every year.
Every year.
Yeah, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Little Rock General Fund, declaring emergency second reading.
Move suspend rules and place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real and personal property within the city of North Rock for the Police Pension and Relief Fund, the Fire Pension and Relief Fund, the Municipal Library Fund, and the North Rock General Fund, declaring emergency third and final reading.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
01569, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the mid-year 2015 quota ordinance, ordinance number 8750, for the North Rock Street Department, declaring emergency first reading.
Move suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion.
On the motion to suspend all reading, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fouch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Uh, first, we have Geneva Richards Earls, Heaver Springs.
My name is Geneva Richards Earls, and I'm here in regards to Richard Cemetery, which is located on East Forty-Sixth Street. At one time, I lived past the cemetery. I received mail there. The school bus ran up and down that road. Someone has decided to close the road and put sprinkler system and sawed in. And the last time we were here, the fire chief made the statement that it would support a fire truck. It will not because it won't even support a truck. Back in the fall, one of the relatives went out there to check on the cemetery in a pickup truck and buried it up. Had to have a wrecker come get them out. And everybody that's on this side of the courtroom are representing Richard Cemetery. And it's been there since the late eighteen hundreds. And we just need to have our road open to where we can get to the cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
And we're asking for y'all's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, John Richards. I forgot to mention, we have three minutes, so try to keep it brief if you can.
Yes. My name is John Douglas Richards, Roman numeral six. There is four other ones buried out there. I went out and measured from the asphalt to the entrance to the cemetery, and it is two hundred and thirty-two feet. That's seventy-seven yards. That's almost a football field. So we have to park on the asphalt and walk through mud, and like I said last time, dog poop, to get to our cemetery. And we need a sponsor, and we need your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Peggy Rup.
I'm Peggy Rup from Cersey, Arkansas. And as you see, there are many here representing the Richard Cemetery. My grandfather is buried in that cemetery. I have uncles, aunts, cousins, nieces in that cemetery. And at one time, we had access to that cemetery until someone took it upon themselves to put sod, a sprinkler system, and the road is gone. I want you to picture yourself going to your loved one's cemetery and the road being blocked by mud, and you can't get in. Not with a car, and if you don't have boots, you can't get in. It's slush and muck. I was just there. Our car was buried. We couldn't get in because of the slush. We're asking for your help. I made some phone calls and I've done some groundwork. I called the Cersey, the city of Cersey, and I spoke with a gentleman today that emailed me this. I want to read you a part of this. It says, "Suitable access automobile to the cemetery. My predecessor has stated that the underlying road has been removed." I think I read where it says automobile access. We don't have that anymore. Your loved ones that are deceased are in a cemetery too. How would you feel if you had to go, if you went to the cemetery and you couldn't get in to see your loved one whom you have been visiting for years? It also says down at the very bottom of this, it said, "An easement." We had an easement. It was taken away. All we're asking for is the road, whether it be crush or run, rock, whatever. Take that sprinkler system out of there. It's flooded. You'll see a ditch if you go over there that is anywhere from a foot to two and a half feet deep where the mound of dirt was filled in, and it's just nothing but a mud and muck. Muck. This section that I'm speaking of is title twenty, Public Health and Welfare. And I have spoken, today I spoke with the Attorney General, and she informed me on what we needed to do. We don't want to do that. We're asking for your help. So please consider our road being reinstalled so we can get back to the Richard Cemetery. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Dwayne Richards.
Good evening. I'm Dwayne Richards. I'm Doug's brother. Our dad was one of the John Richards, and the late, great John Richards settled six hundred and forty acres there back in the eighteen hundreds, a mile square. He definitely owned that cemetery and that road then, didn't he, when he buried his first body there? And then when he was buried there. His blood is running through veins. I represent John Richards because he instilled in me to be a Richards and to be what I am right now. I joke about grandpa owning all that land. They say, "Well, how much did you get?" I say, "You know, there's a little graveyard over there. That's all I got. I never got land. My Aunt Geneva, my dad, my Aunt Frida, friends around here bought land from my grandpa. My grandpa's sister, they all inherited that land. I didn't get any of that land, but I got the great name that John Richards gave me. I went over there the other day. I'm the one that came through there and a new Z-71 and stomped it and throwed mud everywhere and drove right up to the graveyard. I tore that man's yard up real good. You wouldn't hear last time, brother. I've already mentioned that. I went over there the other day. It's unsafe for those people in that apartment to have one way in and one way out. If a national disaster was to happen, a hurricane, I mean, a tornado, the buildings on fire, that road went all the way through to McAlmond at one time. We live there. Geneva lived there. Doug lived there. We, Frida and Lonnie and all these cousins and aunts and uncles, we live there. We've been all over that place. We lived there when my grandfather owned three hundred of those acres, folks. And we know that place like the back of our hand. It's unsafe. That needs to be opened all the way up from the highway over there by the railroad track. Number one, traffic relief for all that traffic around McCain Mall. Put a road through there. I'm talking about not no little two-lane cemetery road. Put a wide road through there. If there's a fire at the apartment, the fire truck can get in there. The people can go this way and they can go that way. Now they just got this way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Billy Joe Tuohy. Yes, sir.
My, my name is Billy Joe Ivy.
Ivy, I'm sorry.
I'm a seventy-nine-year-old retired firefighter with twenty-nine years with Jacksonville Fire Department. I'm one of twenty children of Terry and Doy Ivy. I'm the only boy left now. I enjoy sharing my family history stories with others. And every two years, we have a huge family reunion. Family coming all over the United States. One of the highlight is me showing some of them where the ancestors are buried and telling stories of my life with the family. The Richards came to this area back in eighteen hundred and settled in a large part of the land that is now the McCain Mall area. Worked the land planting crops and raising animals for the family and to sell. John Richard was my great uncle. Richard Cemetery has been part of my entire life. As a child, my sister and I used to work on the farm. Who, there were my Uncle John and cousins. Richard Cemetery dates back to early nineteen thirty. It may have been even earlier with more buried there than didn't have headstones. There are a lot of big rocks that had always been markers in the cemetery. Some of my aunts, uncles, cousins are buried there. My grandpa Holman and grandma are buried there also. As a boy, fourteen years old, I helped dig the grave for my grandpa. And when they lowered the casket, it rose back up because of water that was in the grave. I had to stand on the coffin while they put dirt into it, the graves to hold it down. Every few months, I pay a homage to my ancestors there and see if any upkeep is needed. Imagine my surprise when one day last year I drove up and can no more get to the grave. I've had triple bypass surgery stents, and I had my heart shock about two months ago. I can no longer get to the area to visit my family that I have been cherished. The Arkansas burial laws, human burial in the Arkansases have been treated by looting, grave robbing, and laws through development activities. Whoever approved the plan for the apartment complex and allowed them to block all access to our graveyard did the wrong thing. When an apartment complex that huge has, how do we know if anyone is looting, discreet, vandalizing our headstones and digging in our family's grave? Sites say no access to maintain it. My cousins are in there at seventy and eighty, unable to get to the grave of their parents' crib and their children. How would you feel if someone denied your access to your loved ones? How do we get a casket up there if we have another burial there? How do we get a vehicle in there to maintain, clean our cemetery? All we ask is that the wrong is corrected and we have access to our loved ones. Again, thank you for your time. Any help is appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Jonathan Crouch.
My name is Jonathan Crouch. I've got, I've got many relatives there, grandparents, great-grandparents, great-great-grandparents. This place has meant a lot to my family over the years and my side of the family. We try to, we try to take care of it as much as we can. Get in there and do all the, the mowing and, you know. But I can't get in there to do that right now. I've already gotten my truck stuck down there multiple times because of the sprinkler system, and it just turns it, it just turns it into a big old swamp. And my mother, she has, she has health problems. She can't walk that distance all the way from the pavement to the graveyard just to see her parents' grave, put flowers there, remember. All these people here have a great love and respect for this family. All the people that are buried there mean something. And we just ask for your help to right this wrong and get the, get the street back the way it was supposed to be from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, you need to talk? Jimmy Arden.
Mine shouldn't take that long. Many years ago, I built a thirty-by-thirty in my backyard. I was sent to, the gentleman was over planning at that time. We discussed it. He first thought I need to get one of these little placards to put up what I was doing. He said, "That's part of your business 'cause you work out of your house." I said, "Oh, I have stuff stored back there." He said, "Well, you need to bring me twenty dollars and I'll give you a sign. And when you get through with it, you return it and I'll get, you get your twenty dollars back." Well, then we got to talking and I was gonna do a thirty-by-thirty. Code wouldn't let me do a thirty-by-thirty, but he gave in, said, "I can okay a thirty-by-thirty," which he did. And then he come up with the idea, "We're not gonna call it a business even though you're working out of your house. We're gonna call it a hobby out there." Well, I forgot to turn the sign back in. Before he, this certain person retired, he told me, "Bring it in, get my twenty dollars back." I brought it in because they cannot find where they gave it to me. They didn't want to give me my twenty dollars back. All I want is my twenty dollars or the sign back. It doesn't matter to me. He said, "The reason I had to give him twenty was 'cause that's what it cost him to get another sign made." So all I'm asking for on that deal, mayor, is my twenty dollars or the sign back. That's not asking too much. Now, the other thing I have a problem with is night watchers. My night watcher went out on March, around the first of March in year twenty fifteen. I turned it in like I normally do. It was out, never paid any more attention. Then a month or two ago, I decided to discontinue it, and I asked my next-door neighbor to hear you want to pick it up. He said, "It hadn't worked for months." Sure enough, they didn't fix it. Nobody wants to call me from the electric department. Too bad you're not still over it. Nobody wants to call me from the electric department and discuss refunding any money. I'm on fixed income now. I'm gonna help them out a little bit. All the men robs. If that was one of your kids buried out there, I bet you'd push to get that fixed. And as all of you up there, if you had a relative out there, especially a kid, that's including you, mayor, y'all would push to help get that gravel out there. They had a right to do it to those people. And it's right to have to wind up in court to do it.
Thank you, Jimmy. And last but not least, Alicia Walton. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Alicia Walton, and I'm here tonight asking for your vote in the North Little Rock School Board election for Zone Two. I am the proud parent of three North Little Rock graduates. I am a veteran of the United States Marine Corps and of the Arkansas National Guard. I am currently an attorney, and I have my own practice. It is Green and Walton. I practice primarily in the area of law dealing with juveniles. I believe that I am more than, I, I believe I have the experience necessary to be, work on the board. I've spoken with the superintendent. I understand the vision, and I believe in the vision as set forth by the superintendent and the current board, and I believe that I would be a great asset to the board. So I ask you humbly on tomorrow, September fifteenth, to encourage your friends, family, and you yourself to go out and cast your vote for Alicia Walton. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Thanks for wanting to get involved in our community. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, any council members have anything?
Everybody.
Ms. Ross, we'll start with you.
Well, I have a couple. And Mr. Arden, he pointed his finger at me before I got to say anything. After the last council meeting, this, the same group, you may have had more here last time, about the Richard Cemetery, I drove out there 'cause I thought, well, I'll just go see. I'm not gonna drive my car over that. I don't know if it's grass or wet or whatever. I don't understand why there are not, I mean, can we not just put two concrete strips over the grass, throw down some gravel or something, and give them access? If it's security, if we're having problems down there, maybe a gate or something and give them a key. We've done that in other areas. But there's some way to work with them on this. And we've got to, I mean, you can't deny them. I just, if that, Mr. Arden is absolutely right. If that was my family member, I would, I would probably be out there trying to help pour the concrete myself.
Ms. White?
I have two comments. I went out to the, to the entrance to the site. My husband and I went out there. And we have a small car, and we thought about it, but we backed off. And I have to say that it, something needs to be done. Absolutely. I rarely speak up like this on something like this, but if my family were in there, I'd understand, I understand. And my other thing is, I had a resident call me this week, or last week, and he was, he told me to look in the newspaper, and there was an article about Arkansas, or North Little Rock in fifty years ago, September the tenth, nineteen sixty-five. Well, I won't read the whole thing, but basically, the nineteen sixty-three census reported a population of sixty thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine people in nineteen sixty-three. So we are, we are still maintaining above that number. But I was, you know, it was, I guess it was, it really made me pause that our city's numbers haven't gone up significantly in that time. I didn't live here in those years, but I just want to say to this, this council and to the city and to you, mayor, that, you know, we need to make all efforts with our economic development, some of the initiatives like Jump Start that are working towards low-walkable, livable communities to make this be a place people want to come and move to and stay in. So I just thought, I appreciated that resident drawing my attention to this article, and he had a good point, that we just always need to be looking forward for ways to increase our numbers, but also increase what we do here that makes it be an attractive place to live and, and stay.
Ms. Robinson.
Mayor, I would like to thank Neighborhood Services as well as the person over the electric department. I don't know his name, but when they sent out the newsletter-
What's his name?
I don't know his name. I'm, who?
James Bray.
James Bray.
James, stand up so that Linda can know exactly who you-
James Bray.
That is the boss man right there.
Well, right. People in my community had questions about out, power outage, doing storms or whatever. And they put together some information and mailed it out through Neighborhood Services. And people were enlightened, those that received it. So I hope you've got some extras because I'd like to give them out to Neighborhood Services. I hope they have some extras so that I could give them out to some of the neighborhood groups to educate people on the process. And after some of the folks read the newsletter from Neighborhood Service, they had an understanding as to what happens when there's a power outage. So thank you all for doing that. And then the second thing, and mayor and council members, I don't know if there's anything we can do about this. Some of the people in the city said that prior to working on the new high school, they could go over there and walk the walking trail. And now they're saying they can't walk over there anymore. They don't have access. And they ask us if we're gonna do an alternative. And I'm telling them, we don't have the money, and I don't know about us doing an alternative.
Ms. Ross might have an answer for that?
That was one of the things when they were bringing about the, the plans, and especially to the military hikes because that neighborhood used the track daily. And the school board assured them, and I checked not even a month ago with a school board member, and it's still in the plans, is that there'll be a track down at the Poplar Street School, where Poplar Street is, that they will put in a track there.
Okay.
You know, when they get everyone moved over and everything. And I have one more thing to say.
Sure.
I just want to remind everybody, Saturday is Darkhalla Day in Darkhalla. Parade starts at eleven o'clock. Best place probably is on Curtis Sykes.
Okay.
Probably on Curtis Sykes. And, and then stay around. They'll have hot dogs and games and all kinds of fun stuff.
Fun. Anybody else? Mr. Witcher?
If you didn't notice, the article in the paper Saturday, the library commission made an offer for someone to become the executive director for Weemaw Flamen Library. I have personally met the young, young lady that, that has been hired. She is a dynamo. She's exciting. The staff is excited about her. She has a concept of being a full-service community library and reaching out to all, all sectors of our city. And I, I think that y'all are gonna be pleased with what you will see coming from her office in the next year. So.
I got one.
Real quickly, mayor. I've had a lot of residents asking me about the leaf truck. It seems the last couple of years, the last, I don't know, six or seven weeks of the summer, we have very little rain and the leaves start letting loose quite early. So I, I would guess to say that we are working on a schedule so we can get that leaf truck out quick, fast, and in a hurry sometime after October first.
We are, we're watching it. I mean, it's, it's really a hard call on when to start that. Last year, we started too early. You know, we made the- We are, we're watching it. I mean, it's, it's really a hard call on when to start that. Uh, last year, we started too early. Uh, you know, we made the, the rounds where the most leaves are. Then we went to the area number two, and all the leaves fell the next week on area number one, and so we were in trouble and behind all winter long. So, we're watching it. Our units are, uh, ready. They've been, been servicing them all out and getting them ready. So, we're ready. We're just kind of trying to get a little bit of a better feeling when to pull the trigger, but, uh, I assure you, we watch it, uh, daily.
So, mayor, does that mean that the target date is, is a moving target at this point?
It is. It is.
So, right now, what I've heard is that, that the leaf trucks are scheduled to come in the last week of October.
Well-
Unless you change that date.
That's, that's what we're looking at, and that's what we did last year. It was a little bit too early. Uh, but we didn't have the, the, the dry summer that made all the leaves drop early. But I would say it's going to be at least the third week in October, at least.
And mayor, of course, I always tell the folks that, um, are, should be glad to pick up any that are bagged each week.
Absolutely. And I, I don't like to bag them either, so I feel their pain, for sure. Anybody else? Counselor?
I had, uh, two things that I wanted to mention very quickly. One, uh, you know, one of the biggest investments we've made, uh, as a city is in Plum Point through Moshmuck. It's a weird entity. It's a Missouri joint municipal entity, which falls underneath an organization called MPUA, Missouri Public Utilities Association. We're an associate member there. They try to recognize public servants who do a great job, and this year, they are recognizing, uh, Murray Witcher as the Richard E. Malone Public Service Award.
Hey, Murray!
You know, uh, so, uh, also, it, I think it's quite an honor to be recognized from an entity from another state, you know, for the, uh, for a longstanding public service. So, that's, uh, uh, a big kudos for us there. The other thing-
I nominated you, Murray.
Thank you, Murray.
I think, didn't I?
I think you did.
Yeah, okay.
It's, uh, and then, uh, the other thing that I want to mention, some of you may have heard that out on our biomedia project, we had a contractor that was injured. Uh, we can't really cut to the chase about what was, what caused that. There's, uh, you know, safety investigations are being done, but the one story that you needed to hear was that we were fortunate that we had a crew that was on-site when that happened. And they were able to get that young man down, give him CPR, get his heart beating, get him breathing again, get him the treatment that he needed, and he's going to make a full recovery, and that is unheard of. That is absolutely unheard of. So, when all this shakes out, we're going to try to find a way to get those guys the kudos they deserve, because they just, they proved themselves to be heroes, and it's very impressive to me.
Great. Amen. The good Lord was looking after that young man, no doubt. Okay, seen another, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fauch?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.